Thanks for being here, folks. We are just waiting to get a quorum of the Finance Committee. I've got a member who is signing in virtually and having a little trouble and at least one absence, so stand by. Okay, good morning. It is November 10th at 12:04. I'm going to call the Finance Committee to order. If we could, Christopher, can you please, excuse me, Clerk, can you please call the roll before Christopher?
Certainly. Good afternoon. Green?
Here.
Hertogini?
Here.
Novick?
Here.
Zimmerman?
Here. All right, we've got four present. Christopher, can you read the Statement of Conduct, please? Thank you.
Welcome to the meeting of the Finance Committee. To testify before this committee in person or virtually, you must sign up in advance on the committee agenda at www portland.gov/council/agenda/financedeskcommittee or by calling 311.
I apologize, that was me.
Registration for virtual testimony closes one hour prior to the meeting. In-person testifiers must sign up before the agenda item is heard. If public testimony will be taken on an item, individuals may testify for three minutes unless the chair states otherwise. Your microphone will be muted when your time is over. The chair preserves order. Disruptive conduct such as shouting, refusing to conclude your testimony when your time is up, or interrupting others' testimony or committee deliberations will not be allowed. If you cause a disruption, a warning will be given. Further disruption will result in ejection from the meeting. Anyone who fails to leave once ejected is subject to arrest for trespass. Additionally, the committee may take a short recess and reconvene virtually. Your testimony should address the matter being considered. When testifying, state your name for the record. If you're a lobbyist, identify the organization you represent. And virtual testifiers should unmute themselves when the clerk calls your name. Thank you.
Great. Colleagues, I'm going to have us slightly change the order of items today. We're going to go through 1, 2, 3, 4, and then go to 6 and 7 before we go into number 5. All right? And with that, we're going to read 1 through 4 all together and open them all up at the same time. And so Clerk, if you could read those items, and then we'll begin the presentation. Thank you.
Item 1, amend business license law code to allow sharing select business license tax information with the Bureau of Environmental Services. Item 2, amend protests and appeals and Revenue Division Appeals Board Code. Item 3, amend special taxes code to conform to Oregon Revised Statute 314.835. Item 4, amend Lloyd Business District Fee Code to correct inadvertent change.
Great. So it's a day of housekeeping in the Revenue Bureau Code world. So Jonas Berry, our CFO, I'm going to turn it over to you.
Great. Thanks, Chair and Committee. Again, for the record, Jonas Berry, the city's Chief Financial Officer. Yeah, so this is a package of four proposed items to effect technical cleanups to various sections of City Code related to the Revenue Division. These housekeeping adjustments will ensure that current code aligns with recent changes to state law and/or corrects inadvertent omissions from other prior recent code changes. So I'll briefly describe what's happening within each of the four ordinances and then open up to questions on the package. We also have a number of Revenue Division staff and other subject matter experts in the room or online if needed. So starting with item 1, disclose business license tax return info to the Bureau of Environmental Services. Background here, Oregon Revised Statute 314.835 places restrictions on sharing of tax return information by the Oregon Department of Revenue. The 2024 Oregon Legislature adopted House Bill 4031, which amended ORS 314.835 to apply to local governments as well. The intent of the ORS and the House Bill is to protect taxpayer information, which can be highly sensitive from inappropriate disclosure. So this update to Portland City Code Chapter 7.02.240 will clarify that the Revenue Division is allowed to provide certain non-financial business license tax return information with the Bureau of Environmental Services specifically to aid with BES's required compliance activities and in compliance with that statute. I'm going to jump a little out of order to item 3, which is very closely related to item 1. This is the transient lodging tax confidentiality update. So again, related to ORS 314.835 as revised. That statute also applies to the sharing of transient lodging taxpayer information. So the updates in item 3 to Section 6.04, 6.05, and 6.09 of City Code brings the city's confidentiality requirements in conformance with that updated statute. Step back to item 2, which is amend City Code 7.02.290 and 7.02.295. History here, in September 22, 2022, council amended sections of City Code Chapter 7.02 to recognize the Revenue Division's role in administering income taxes on behalf of Metro and Multnomah County. That 2022 ordinance inadvertently omitted adjusting the time for the Revenue Division to respond to requests for penalty waivers. This proposed update to 7.02.290 provides appropriate clarity about the requirements and timelines for such activities. Additionally, the code updates Section 7.02.295 to clarify membership in terms for members of the Revenue Division Appeals Board, including the addition of a criminal background check for new appointments. And finally, item 4, amend Chapter 6.06 related to the Enhanced Service District for the Lloyd District. In December 2023, council amended sections of City Code Chapter 6.06 to reflect the fee rates and structure specific to the Lloyd District Enhanced Service District. Subsequently, in November 2024, council amended that same Chapter 6.06 for changes specific to the downtown Portland Clean and Safe Enhanced District. Unfortunately, when that 2024 code revision was made, it inadvertently omitted the previous Lloyd District-specific changes in 2023. So the proposed change today simply corrects that omission and adds back the accidentally deleted provisions. So with that administrivia spoken for the record, hand over back to you, Chair. Thank you.
A barn burner list of events and ordinances today, Mr. Berry. Okay, colleagues, I'm going to go to discussion and questions altogether. Actually, excuse me. Let me do a quick check with Clerk, if we have any testimony on any of these items.
No one signed up.
Okay. With that, I'm going to go ahead and questions and deliberation together and move to Counselor Green first.
Thank you. These all very much do feel like housecleaning adjustments. I am just curious, on the ESD one, are those rates in effect in practice? Like, are these ESDs sort of like adopting this even though it's not, like it somehow got screwed up in the amendment language?
Counsel, I believe that's the case, and if staff in the room or online believe otherwise.
This wouldn't be like an abrupt change in their rates?
Correct. This is just cleaning up to make sure that the code actually reflects the prior council action from 2023.
I have to ask the question, so appreciate that. That's it.
Okay. I'm not seeing any other questions. I'm pausing pregnantly to see if anybody pops up. Nothing? Okay, with that, Clerk, is it possible for us to adopt these all with one single vote, or do you need them separate?
We would prefer separate, but we can accept all together.
Okay, let's go ahead and do separate. There are some different topics here, so let's just go ahead and go items 1 through 4, and we'll do quick votes on those. Thank you.
Okay, for item 1, Green?
Aye.
Hertogini?
Aye.
Novick?
Aye.
Zimmerman?
Aye.
The motion is approved with four ayes and no votes and one absent.
And to quickly make an administrative change, I'm going to go ahead and for the record say that Counselor Hertogini made the motion, and Counselor Green seconded that we adopt all of these.
Sorry.
Thanks, colleagues, for my mistake, not the Clerk's.
And Chair, I would move that we adopt Agenda Item 2 on today's agenda.
Second. There we go. All right, Clerk, now that I'm done fubbing the day, if you could call the roll on item number 2.
You and I both. Okay. Green?
Aye.
Hertogini?
Aye.
Novick?
Aye.
Zimmerman?
Aye.
And the motion is approved with four ayes.
Okay, colleagues, same motion for the item number 3?
Chair, I would move that we pass item number 3 to the full council agenda.
Second.
All right, we've got Hertogini and Novick in there. If we can call the roll.
Okay. Green?
Aye.
Hertogini?
Aye.
Novick?
Aye.
Zimmerman?
Aye.
And the motion is approved with four ayes.
Okay, do I have a motion for number 4, please?
I would move that we, I would motion that we move Agenda Item 4 to the full council with a "do pass" recommendation.
Thank you.
Second.
The second from Green, thank you. With that, we'll call the roll.
Green?
Aye.
Hertogini?
Aye.
Novick?
Aye.
Zimmerman?
Aye.
And the motion is approved with four ayes.
Great. All right, thank you, Mr. Berry. Appreciate the housekeeping, and we'll see that back at full council. With that, colleagues, reminder, we're going to go to item number 6, which is an appointment of some retire, excuse me, some reappointment of members to some boards. So let's go to item 6, please.
Item 6, reappoint Catherine MacLeod to the Fire and Police Disability and Retirement Board of Trustees for a term to expire December 31, 2028.
All right, good afternoon. Come on up, introduce yourselves, and take it away, please.
Hello, I'm Sam Hutchison, Bureau Director of Fire, Police, Disability, and Retirement. I'd like to thank you all for having us here.
I'm Catherine MacLeod. I'm a citizen trustee currently on the FPDR Board of Trustees.
Right. And so we're here today to ask for your approval to reappoint Catherine for another three-year term with the FPDR Board of Trustees. Catherine's been with, I think, nine years now with the FPDR Board, serving in various roles, a citizen trustee for a while, the chair's, the mayor's, what do I want to cut, designee as chair, and then back as a citizen trustee. Kathy has a tremendous amount of public experience. She has her own actuarial firm. She's done an extensive amount of work in public pension work over the time. She has an excellent understanding of the FPDR pension, and she brings valuable pension experience to the board. We sometimes, the staff will go to her as a subject matter expert if we have certain questions about our pension plan and how we should administer it with that. She's very engaged in all the activities that happen with the, with the board and with the Bureau. She's unafraid of asking pointed questions of my staff when they give financial reports to her. Same thing with Millenman, our actuary, and also Baker Tilly, if I've got her new name correctly, our auditor with that. So it's been very helpful for that. She delves into questions and issues that other trustees haven't dealt with in the past. So it's been very helpful to us with that. And we think it's a great opportunity to have her continue on because she is such an expertise in the board. The board directors look to her help, we look to her help, and I think she does a fantastic job. So Catherine, if you'd like to give a little background on yourself?
My background, I've been living in the city of Portland since 1979, worked for large insurers here, and been involved in pension or retiree health benefits for 45 years. So a long time. I like to contribute to the city. I love Portland and like to contribute volunteer efforts, and I've done it in a variety of different ways. But nine or 10 years ago, when I became aware of this opportunity to be on the board, I realized I had a unique set of credentials that probably only 20 or 30 people might have, so I could focus my efforts where they could be used most effectively.
And I'd like to go, I overran my presentation I wanted to give, so why don't we go ahead and kick that up real quick? Some of that's going to be a little redundant with that. Is that up on everybody's screens here right now?
It is.
Okay. So this is, we're here again just to reappoint Catherine MacLeod. So the next slide, please. So what the FPDR, the voters created FPDR as its present form in 1948. It was created for the benefit of the sworn employees of the Fire and Police bureaus and to the benefit of their surviving spouses and dependent minor children. The plan is defined in the City Charter, Chapter 5. As part of the design of the board is, we have four, or excuse me, five trustees who oversee the plan. And these trustees administer the plan itself, as well supervises and controls the FPDR Fund and Reserve Fund. They approve our operating budget, which is in turn used to determine the amount of levy that is needed to fund the fund every year. And they prescribe rules and regulations for the administration of the plan, and they provide general oversight of the administration of the program. And all those are outlined in the City Charter. Just wanted to give you a heads up of who is on the board presently. We have Patrick Hughes, who many of you know. He's the mayor's designee and board chair. In the past, Mayor Hales served in this role. He did not designate, but Mayor Wheeler has designated Patrick Hughes this time, or excuse me, Mayor Wilson. Mayor Wheeler did the initial, and Mayor Wilson kept him going. My mayor's all messed up here. Apologize. He is approved by the council, and there is no set term duration. He serves at the will of the mayor. Kyle McLaury is the fire trustee. They, he is elected by active-duty firefighters. He serves a three-year term. We have Thomas Stoffel Jr., who's the police trustee. Again, he's elected by the fire trustees for a three-year term, not fire trustees, the active-fire, okay, I'm going to mess this up. He's active-duty police officers, my apologies. We have Tom Kramer, who's our other citizen trustee. He's selected by the mayor and approved by council, and he's serving a three-year term. And then, of course, we have Catherine with that. Next slide. I think we've covered everything. Just again, I just think Catherine's extensive experience with FPDR is something we don't want to lose, and we want to continue having. Thank you.
Okay. Do we have any public testimony on this item?
No one signed up.
Okay, Counsel Hertogini.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you, Catherine, for your willingness to serve for such an extended period of time for our city. You've been doing this for a while, so I'm guessing you have put some thought into what the role is as a board member and for the board as a whole. And I'm wondering if you can just share with us as a citizen trustee specifically what you see as your role on the board, and then broadly as one of five board members working together to keep this plan moving in the right direction, what you see as your role, and if those things are the same, or if there's a little bit of difference between them.
I'm not sure I followed all of that extended question, but I'll start it, and if I miss something, let me know, and I'm happy to go back. In general, my role is to serve with the other trustees, to make certain that the plan is administered in accordance with the rules and regulations that have been set forth in the administrative procedures of the plan. Ours is not to determine the benefits payable under the plan or how it's funded. We frequently delve into those areas, and it's somewhat frustrating to not be able to really take any action with regard to that. But our role is to administer the plan as it's set forth currently. And that involves things like setting annual COLA limits, reviewing the budget and making, and the ongoing finances of the plan, the expenses, making certain that the benefits are administered in accordance with the plan, they're calculated correctly, provided to the proper parties, those kinds of things.
Thank you.
Counsel Novick?
I can't resist now that you said that it's sometimes frustrating not to weigh in on the broader issues. I have to ask you, if you could weigh in on those broader issues, what would you want to do?
Well, again, we're driven more by the interests of the covered members and their beneficiaries and by the FPDR staff. And it will frequently come up, things about equal to or better than tests, or disability benefits, or the plan funding, those kinds of things. Again, it's our job to administer the plan as currently written and in accordance with our understanding of the rules of the plan. But those questions frequently will come up in front of the board, and we are engaged and want to listen to those, and we'd like to move them forward. But as a board, a standalone board, we don't, it's my understanding from the external counsel for FPDR, that that is not our role or responsibility. So I guess if I could move something forward, I would be encouraged to have this Finance Committee or council be present to or participate in some joint discussions on some of those topics. But if they fall simply to our Board of Trustees, I think our hands are frequently tied in being unable to take action.
Thank you. I might try to take you up on the suggestion of having those discussions about plan funding in particular. So thank you, and thanks for your service.
Thank you.
Counsel Green?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, I would just follow up. First of all, I want to say thank you for throwing your hat in the ring again and serving the city. And just to touch on that last bit a bit, if this committee did want to engage directly with the Board of Trustees on questions about funding in particular, would that be something you'd be comfortable with engaging with us on?
I certainly can't speak for the other trustees, but I certainly would be. I certainly can't speak for the other trustees, but I certainly would be. I think it would be helpful.
Wonderful. Well, I'm sure you'll have some of those opportunities. We like to talk about this stuff often. So thank you so much.
Okay. Kathy, thanks for stepping up. Appreciate that. Sam, thanks for the presentation and bringing us back to, you know, the origins and also the makeup of the boards. It is helpful. We have a lot of these boards, and understanding where they all sit in our organization is helpful. So with that, I'll entertain a motion, colleagues.
Chair, I would move that we move forward the confirmation of Catherine McLeod to the board, or reappointment, I guess. Confirmation of the reappointment to the board, to the full council for a vote.
Thank you.
Second.
All right. Counsel Pertogini, and then seconded by Counsel Green. With that, call the roll.
Green.
Aye.
Pertogini.
Aye.
Novick.
Aye.
Zimmerman.
Aye.
The motion is approved with four ayes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay. We're going to move to item seven.
Reappoint Sean Wallace and appoint Penny Sweeting to the Revenue Division Appeals Board.
Okay. Mr. Berry is back up in the hot seat. Take it away, Jonas.
All right. Thank you, Chair. Again, for the record, Jonas Berry, the city's chief financial officer. In August, this committee received a briefing from the Revenue Division on the Revenue Division Appeals Board, an appointment of two board members at that time. It was previewed at that time that another vacancy would soon be filled, and that time is now. A report from the prior presentation, or sorry, a repeat of the prior presentation is included in the online agenda. So I'll let you take a look at that as a refresher, and I'll just give a 60-second kind of overview here verbally today. As a quick reminder, the Revenue Division Appeals Board, or RDAB, is a five-member volunteer board comprised of members of the public. Occasionally, after review and audit of a filed taxpayer return, the Revenue Division will make adjustments to that return. If taxpayers disagree with that adjustment, there's a protest process via the Revenue Division, and if still unresolved, taxpayers can make an appeal to the Revenue Division Appeals Board. The board will then review the facts of the case, hear and review testimony, and then make a final decision on whether or not the Revenue Division's adjustments were correct. There's a very limited pool of individuals with the knowledge of accounting methods and tax laws required to perform this volunteer service, and outreach has been conducted towards increasing the diversity of the board. We're grateful for the two appointees before you today. Reappointee Sean Wallace is a licensed CPA, working in tax compliance and planning, and will be serving his second term on the board. New appointee Penny Sweeting is a licensed CPA specializing in state and local taxes, and has previously served on other tax-related committees. Their more full information is included in the packet, and I believe they're both available here online today. We thank Mr. Wallace and Ms. Sweeting for their willingness to serve city taxpayers and look forward to their participation on the board. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Berry. Is there anybody signed up for public testimony on this item?
No one signed up.
Okay, colleagues. Questions or discussion? Vice Chair.
I'll jump in. Thank you, Chair. Jonas, it's a five-member board, and do I remember correctly that there are no specific requirements for any of the seats? It's just a broad requirement that somebody have that CPA background to serve?
I believe that's correct. I don't know that CPA is required. That's just strongly, strongly recommended, given that expertise is required.
Okay, but we're not looking at a board that says a seat for somebody from this background and that background, anything like that?
That's what I understand is correct.
Thank you for clarifying.
Okay. Penny and Sean, thank you for stepping up with that. Clerk, if you could call the roll.
Could we get a motion first?
That was helpful.
I would move that we reappoint Mr. Wallace to the board and appoint Ms. Sweeting to the board. Or I guess we don't appoint, that we move forward the confirmations to council.
Second.
All right. With Vice Chair and Counsel Green, we'll move to vote.
Green.
Aye.
Pertogini.
Aye.
Novick.
Thank you very much for willingness to serve. Aye.
Zimmerman.
Aye. Thank you.
The motion is approved with four ayes.
Great. Okay. We're going to move, colleagues, back to item number five. And I want to note for folks that we do have a number of people signed up today for testimony. So we'll go through that, once we read it in, go through that presentation, do some questions, and then we'll go to public testimony and then have a discussion. Okay? Let's go ahead and read and open item number five, please.
Item number five, adopt city of Portland investment policy.
See staff coming up to the table, and I think to start, I'll turn it back to our CFO, Mr. Berry.
Great. Thank you, Chair and Committee. For those just tuning in, I am still Jonas Berry, still the chief financial officer at the city of Portland. ORS, Oregon Revise Statute 294.135, related to public investments, requires that the city council annually adopt an investment policy so that the city may continue investing fund balances and earn the desired interest income to the city. The policy in effect for calendar 2025, the calendar year we're currently in, was approved by city council in November 2024. This resolution will approve the policy to be effective for calendar 2026. The city's policy places strict limits and conditions on the types of securities that the city may invest in, as will be described shortly. The city does not typically make significant changes to the policy, and we're not proposing to do so with this iteration. The changes proposed in this resolution are cleanup administrivia for consistency with changes in position titles driven by the fiscal 2526 adopted budget. The city is fortunate to have experienced professionals to manage the city's investment portfolio. I'd like to take a moment to thank Investment Officer Michael Montgomery for the work that he does every day to monitor city cash flow needs, market trends, and investment opportunities to maximize returns within the limitations of this policy. I'd also like to thank City Treasurer Bridget O'Callahan, to whom I'll now pass to a brief, pass over to for a brief overview of the city's investment policy and portfolio.
Thank you, CFO Berry. For the record, my name is Bridget O'Callahan, and I'm the city treasurer. And as Jonas referenced, joining us online today is the city's investment officer, Michael Montgomery. Michael will be available to answer any questions that we may have as we go through the information today. As Jonas mentioned, I'm here to present the city's investment policy for your consideration. As referenced, Oregon law requires us to bring this to council annually, and so we typically do that in a November timeframe, and we are here to do that today. We do have a few housekeeping revisions, and a red line copy of the document has been provided for your reference. The investment policy describes the framework and criteria for investing the city's cash assets. That portfolio is presently approximately $2.8 billion. That fluctuates over time depending upon, you know, different cycles of the city's financial needs. And the Treasury Division monitors very closely the activities of the various bureaus, as well as the budget, to identify how to invest those funds. Again, typically, they are very short-term investments. The city's investment policy, as I said, describes that framework for the investment policy. It serves as a guide to offer an objective course of action to be followed. And that's especially important during times of market disruption or when emotional or, you know, intensive situations might occur. So it's that guiding force that keeps us on the straight and narrow as to what we need to be doing with the city's funds. The investment earnings make a significant contribution to the city's budget and to the programs and services that the bureaus provide. Investment earnings net of the Treasury's, if the admin fee to cover Treasury's costs are distributed directly back to the funds. And in fiscal year 2425, that was $115 million net of the administrative costs. Fiscal year to date, September 2025, Treasury has earned $28 million on the city's portfolio. The investment policy, as we mentioned, must go to council every year, and there are no material changes. I'm going to ask to go to the next slide, please. The objectives of a policy are in order of which they are listed here on the slide, and that is to preserve the principle so that the funds are available to the city when we need them, to ensure liquidity so that allows us to be nimble if we need to respond very quickly. We have the ability to do that. And of course, to earn a market rate on the portfolio. If we may go to the next slide, please. As referenced, the city's policy is based on some guidelines provided by the state of Oregon, certainly. But we also have further added additional provisions to our policy that really focus on the needs of the city, making sure that we are investing in very sound, stable, and safe investments. And what you'll see on this slide are the investment categories that we have in the policy today. You'll see that it's heavily weighted in U.S. Treasuries and Agency Securities, and that we have corporate indebtedness that's limited, and we'll talk about that on the next slide, and then some other investment categories. Again, very stable, what we would call fixed income types of investments. If we can go to the next page, please. Several years ago, the city council and community have provided some input to the Treasury Division and to the city in looking at our investment policy in terms of social responsibility. And over the years, we have evolved the policy that we're presently using today. The most recent revisions to that policy occurred in 2021. What you'll see presently is that there's an overlay or a filter that we use over and above our policy that's outlined, that allows us to exclude certain industries. So we are presently using the Bloomberg Standard Industrial Classification metric to allow us to exclude fossil fuel-related transactions, arms-related transactions, alcoholic beverages, casinos, correctional facilities, and security services. Again, that's an overlay that we put on top, over and above what we're required to do by state law and by our, the base of our policy, but it's really allowing us to be responsive to the feedback we've had from community and from council in terms of making sure that we're meeting the expectations of our community. The next page, please. What you'll see on this screen are the investment allocations. So this is presently how the city's investment policy is invested today. In the interest of time, I'm not going to spend a whole lot of time on this slide, but I'm happy to talk through it with all of you if you would like to momentarily, if there are any questions about any of these categories. Again, what you'll see is it's heavily weighted on Treasury and Agency Securities, and then the other sectors are primarily used for diversification, right? We don't want all of our eggs in one basket, and so it allows for risk management of the portfolio. If you'll go on to the next page, please. This page represents the historical yields in the portfolio, and you'll see reflected in there. The COVID pandemic certainly was a challenge for us, but other things that affect the historical yields might be the size of the portfolio, what's available in the market, what the Federal Reserve is doing. All of those things are components that play into the historical yield. Again, we're, you know, trying to keep the ship steady. We're not looking to make the highest yield on the portfolio. We're looking to make a market yield. Again, the focus is on safety. On the next page, if you would please, references are historical earnings. So you'll see, again, that's going to fluctuate depending upon the markets and depending upon the balances that are in our portfolio. Some of the things that influence the balances in the portfolio certainly are revenue collection. But it's also going to be things like, at the time, the city might issue bonds. So when we issue bonds, we might have a larger portion of those funds available to invest for a short time before they're used in a construction project, for example. So that's going to fluctuate from time to time. With that, those are some highlights of the policy. I'm happy to answer questions, and of course, as I mentioned, our investment officer, Michael Montgomery, is online to answer questions as well.
Thanks so much. We'll go to questions before we go to public testimony, if there are questions from the committee. Counsel Pertogini.
Just want to clarify, in the red line of the changes that are actually being proposed, I see changes that insert the new chief financial officer position. Are there any other changes that I'm missing?
I'm not recalling. Let me just double-check with Michael Montgomery. To my knowledge, we were just changing things that would make it congruent with our current form of government.
Okay. So this is the annual readoption of our policy, plus ensuring that we're in line with the changes we've made over the past two years?
That is correct.
Thank you.
Counselor Novick.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Ms. O'Callahan, I think that I was actually the first counselor to propose kind of a socially responsible investment policy for the corporate investments back in like 2014, 2015. And at the time, I started off saying, let's not invest in Walmart. And then I was, we were talking about, can we come up with some framework that we don't invest in the most evil companies, regardless of what business they happen to be in? And apparently, over time, that's developed to, there's specific industries we don't invest in, rather than making a company-by-company determination of evilness. However, there are ratings agencies, I think there's something called MSCI, that ranks companies according to social, environmental, and governance criteria. And at one point, an idea that we talked about was, we just adopt a policy that we don't invest in the like 30 worst companies identified by a rating service like that. But I vaguely recall that maybe a problem with that was that the, those ratings aren't publicly available, so that would have kind of been a problem. Does this, I mean, so I'm just curious, are you familiar with these ESG rating agencies? And would there be an issue with, a problem with revisiting that issue and trying to say that we're not going to invest in the 30 most evil companies, regardless of what business they're in?
Thank you for the question, Counselor. And first of all, I want to acknowledge that you were a little bit ahead of the game when you introduced this. I believe it might have been as early as 2013, perhaps. So thank you, first of all, for that forethought. To answer your question, there are a number of indexes that are available for us to consult with regard to socially responsible investing. The challenge with those lists are one that they can be manipulated by the companies themselves. So that's certainly a challenge and something that we would need to monitor for. But those lists change so frequently that it makes it very difficult for the city to manage against that type of a list. We have looked at quite a number of the lists that are out there. And again, I can share with you that our present policy is not allowing us to invest in firms that we otherwise, generally speaking, that the city would be incongruent with the city's values. Specific to that, we picked these industries because these industries were the most egregious offenders. But we also want to bear in mind that we, the city's investment policy has a very high credit quality requirement. And the vast majority of the firms on those, on the list, the boycott lists or the divestment lists, the vast majority of them would not qualify for our policy in the first place because they're not of high enough credit quality. The other thing I want to make sure that we're clear about as well is that when we mention corporate securities in the city's investment policy, we're speaking of purchasing bonds of that organization, not stocks. That's a very important distinction because with a stock, you take an actual ownership position in a company. The city of Portland does not do that. We are more like a creditor to them in the sense that we are investing in the firm or purchasing their bonds for a very short period of time. Did I answer your question, Counselor?
Yeah, and I think that, I still think that there's companies out there that we wouldn't want to forget about the entire category, such as banks, but there are some that are really, do lots of really, really bad stuff. So I, if you don't mind, at some point in the next few weeks, I want to get in touch with you and sort of go over what some of the issues are with those ratings agencies and see if maybe we could design a policy that if something was like in the top 10 bad companies, you know, five out of six years or something, then we could exclude it. But that's an offline conversation, but I appreciate the background. But that, that's an offline conversation, but I appreciate the background and I feel silly that, since I worked on this 10 years ago, that I haven't gotten in touch with you about this before.
Well, thank you. I appreciate that and would certainly welcome the dialogue.
Yeah, and Counselor, if I may also add, just for awareness, the city, I don't think the state of this Bridget, but the city does publish our portfolio monthly, so that's available on the city webpage, the Treasury webpage, so folks can take a look at what has been historically invested in and currently invested in and see how that may or may not compare against any, any lists that are out there.
Gotcha.
Okay, Counselor Green.
I'm curious about the, so it's helpful to know that, okay, we're just investing in bonds, although I'll note that if you are a creditor to a company that you think has, you know, doing bad things, that's, maybe you don't own it, but you're still party to that bad thing, I would argue. But I am curious, though, how often do we change our bond composition? Like, do we buy to term and hold to duration? Or are we constantly sort of rebalancing and changing our stake, so to speak, in particular bonds?
Great question, and certainly would look to Michael Montgomery to provide more detail on specifically how we do that. But at a high level, if you think of, from a Treasury perspective, we are managing the city's cash flow in a dynamic environment. So that means that if you think of Treasury as the city's bank, that's essentially what we function as, right? All funds come in to the city centrally, we bank them centrally, and then we invest them centrally in a pool. And those decisions are being made on a daily basis, sometimes an hourly basis, depending upon what we're seeing the needs in the portfolio. So typically, they are very short-term investments, and oftentimes, they, because of the credit quality requirements, our challenge often is finding corporate securities that we can purchase so that meet our needs in terms of the tenor and certainly the return for the risk in the portfolio as well. So have I answered your question?
Yeah, no, that's helpful. So it's sort of a daily Treasury management.
Correct.
Okay. So then, if suppose, you know, we have this conversation, we continue to talk about these other lists perhaps, if we got to a more restricted category, I understand there's only a few firms that we can even hold anyway, but, but what would be the opportunity cost in revenue to the city? I'm curious to understand that a little bit. If we, like, didn't have any exposure at all to corporate bonds, I guess is the question I have.
Yeah, I think we've done some math on what the corporate portfolio itself produces on average, and I don't remember.
Yeah, Michael, I want to make sure we get the most accurate information.
Yeah, we can go to, go to Michael to get that. I'll just also, just for awareness, I think right now, there's just over 40 eligible corporates that even meet the threshold, so I just want to also acknowledge, you know, we're talking about a very limited universe. You know, so that's after we make our credit, credit quality assessment, the existing socially responsible screen, and also just noting that many of those, to use Counselor Novick's analogy of the evilest companies already, maybe all of them don't make that threshold, right? They already have credit quality issues, maybe perhaps because of those other realities that exist, so. And then the last comment I'll make, and then I will hand to Mr. Montgomery, is the challenge with identifying those, where you draw that line, the objective should be that it's very clear, right? So the benefit of the current screen we use now is it's very professionally managed, it's clear, it's consistent, and we don't put the burden on a human at the city to make that judgment call. And so that's a, that's a very dangerous kind of spot. Because of that, the last comment I'll make, because of that, I think there is legitimate risk that when we start to stray from those sort of very solid methodologies, kind of known methodologies, consistently managed methodologies, there is risk that we just say, you know what, it's, we can't put that burden of judgment on a, on a city employee, and so we would potentially lose the ability to invest in those corporates. All of which, to then hand to Mr. Montgomery to identify what that, if you can, what that trade-off would be in, in return.
Thanks, Jonas. Hopefully, you can hear me, Michael Montgomery, Investment Officer for the City of Portland. And I would echo what Jonas and Bridget have both mentioned. From an implementation standpoint, from, as far as an offset, if the city chose to disembark from a balanced investment program and approach to managing the city's assets, we can go back for any number of years, some of the data that I've presented, and I think Bridget's shared internally with you, is for a, for a roundabout number, in today's environment, the credit portion of the investments is adding on a net basis around $6 million a year to the earnings in the portfolio. And I'll say that with a caveat because much, if we look back at the slide of the interest earnings, it fluctuates greatly based on what our market returns are, how much money the city has, and where spreads are at on corporate bonds. And in the last 10 years, corporate bond spreads have narrowed tremendously so where we have triple A corporations, double A corporations that we invest in in the 35% bucket, historically may have traded in the, you know, like 40 basis points over Treasuries, now trade within single digits. And so that additive value that the corporate bucket adds to the portfolio, although today may be a $6 million in hard dollar terms, it can fluctuate, and so it could be much larger, it could continue to narrow, but, but in an honest number for today's environment, I think $6 million is a fair number to reconcile with if you were to exit investing in any high-grade corporate bonds.
Thank you, Michael.
I appreciate that, and that's just helpful to note. I am interested, so this is an annual update process, right?
Correct.
But it's a resolution, it's a policy that can always be revisited at any time?
That's correct.
I am interested in kind of taking a deliberate approach to looking at our policy and adding another sort of human rights screen lens to this, but I want to make sure that I understand the full impacts of how to do that in a good way. I'm not bringing anything forward today, but just thanks for the dialogue.
Thank you. We'd welcome the conversation. Thank you.
Wester.
Thank you, Chair. I just want to make sure I understand the socially responsible parameters, the appendix A. We have identified industry classifications, and we use the Bloomberg standard for that. If we were to overlay something that was a values-based outside of an industry classification, let's say, for example, I wanted to overlay something that said, we won't invest in any corporates that have problematic labor relations, it's a thing I might be in, you know, that might align with my values. How would we go about, do we have a way to determine that even? Is there, does Bloomberg have an overlay like that, or is that something where we would really, to the point you made earlier, be asking our investors, our city employees, to try to go through and find out who that was and determine which companies were bad enough to fall within that category?
Great question. The challenge is exactly as you've highlighted. The source of locating that information is very difficult. However, I would say that oftentimes, that's factored into the credit evaluations that those firms are required to undergo from the rating agencies, right? They're going to take all of that into account, so that will often be factored in. If there are egregious activities going on by that particular corporate, that's going to be incorporated, likely will affect their credit rating. Just like we worry about the city's credit rating, a corporation would worry about that in the same way. So, so that I would highlight. I'm not aware of any reliable source for that kind of information. And I will be honest with you, from my professional opinion in terms of looking at the investment portfolio, I would probably recommend excluding corporates from our portfolio entirely rather than putting ourselves at risk of trying to make those decisions. That is unfortunate because the corporate securities, as I mentioned, diversifies our portfolio, helps manage risk in the portfolio, so there's other reasons to have corporates in there. But I also would not want to put us in a position where we couldn't comply with a policy or that we were making decisions that would not be prudent. And, you know, as I said, the number one requirement of our policy is that it's safe and sound and is secondarily liquid and available for us. And I couldn't guarantee that if we have an overlay that's too difficult to manage.
Got it. So as I'm understanding it, looking at industry classifications is doable, looking at some other sort of overlay might lead you to instead make the recommendation that we disinvest from corporates altogether, which would cost us in the last year or two about $6 million a year in services that we could provide to Portlanders, knowing that that number variables varies significantly year to year?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Back to Counselor Novick. Counselor Novick, you are muted right now.
Thank you. I think actually that a previous council, either at the end of my term or after my term, decided to simply stop investing in corporate debt entirely to avoid making those distinctions. I think that's a very unfortunate thing to do because it sacrifices money for the city without making any point. I mean, the point is that we're trying to make is that some corporations are more worthy of our investment than others. And as to the criteria, I recall, I mean, I'm going to talk to the Treasurer about these ratings agencies, but my recollection was that, I think it was the ratings agency, MCSI, had these comprehensive social, environmental, and governance criteria, and if you looked at the worst five companies on their list, they looked pretty damn bad. So my inclination would be to find some outside rating agency to look at and base our decisions on them. If that make me, at least that's what I'd want to explore. So I want to have that conversation with Treasurer Callahan, and I do seem to recall there was like a, a sort of process problem with that in that only subscribers to those rating services are able to release what their ratings are or something, so that might make things somewhat difficult. But my idea is that I'd like for us to have some screen, other than purely just the lines of business, for evil companies, and I like that screen not to be something that our employees are doing, but that somebody else is doing that we think is reliable. So obviously, we don't need to, I mean, so I plan to renew this discussion after this meeting. I obviously have no problem renewing our current policy, but that's, that's my thinking.
Yeah, and Counselor, this is Jonas, happy to have that conversation, and I know Bridget's happy to have that conversation, I'll just reiterate Bridget's comments earlier, and this is probably something that's evolved in the market over the last decade, that those ESG scores are now factored in as part of the rating process. And so I, let's do the due diligence, let's have the conversation, but often, those sort of negative ESG-related characteristics are also reflected now in the broader credit quality assessment that's given, which might actually already be a natural screen to prevent those corporates from being eligible in our portfolio. But let's have the conversation, let's do the due diligence. I just wanted to call that out here while we're having this conversation today. Thanks.
Thank you.
So when I look at the list, I, I see, I guess, some of the very expected vices, if you will, right? Alcohol, casinos, gaming. I don't see tobacco there. And I guess, not that I care one way or the other about either one of those, but whose set of values and how did their set of values find their way to that list? Also, what constitutes security services and why that found its way onto the list? I'm trying to understand just some of these categories. And I say that also with the, with the caveat or umbrella statement of perhaps there are no corporations or businesses within those categories that we give a darn about in terms of being something we would want to invest in, but I'm wondering how they found themselves to this list and what we consider that, and then I've got a couple of follow-ups.
Yeah, great question, and I may also bring Mr. Montgomery in the conversation as well because he was part of the process. Several years ago, as Counselor Novick mentioned, there was some guidance from council to create a socially responsible investment committee on a temporary basis to do exactly that, to look at how we could add this kind of a filter to our policy. And we tried a number of things, as was referenced, including taking corporates completely out of the portfolio. What we ultimately ended up with was this list based upon the input we received at that time. There were a number, we started with a number of specific names, specific firms that there were concerns with at that time, and then we looked at what industries they were involved in so that we could exclude them. I'm not, I'm not aware of the tobacco issue, so I'll ask Michael in a moment if he remembers the history of that. But I do know, for example, security services, this was looking at privately-run prisons. There were some concerns about privately-run prisons, and so that's...
That different than corrections facilities, because that's also listed. That's where my, one of my questions is at, on that topic.
Right. I believe that some of these firms might have been classified as either, and so I think that's how that came about. But Michael, is there anything you'd like to add? And if there was a conversation about tobacco, do you have some of the history on that?
Yeah, I, it's been a number of years since that committee was around. You know, we can go back and kind of take a look at the notes and try to see. I know offhand, as far as tobacco companies, there aren't any publicly traded firms that issue debt that are rated high enough for us to purchase currently, but not opposed to, you know, looking at adding that into the...
Oh, I'm not actually proposing it. I just, I'm asking the question to get a good sense of like how certain people's value statements got onto this document and others did not, right? And so don't take my questions as I wish one industry or another was on there. It's more of a, kind of a fact-finding, I remember this as a consumer of Portland government back in the day, but I wasn't involved.
Sure.
So I guess with, we have seen the market move from smaller companies, smaller corporations, to large conglomerates taking on a host of lines of business. It's not unheard of for maybe a business who's in the, you know, manufacturing of some sort of material, all of a sudden now owns an alcohol company, or a telecommunications company now owns a Nintendo-type of gaming that your kids might play, but then they also get into the business of selling a casino game, right? And so as we see the large conglomerates own 50 brands, how do we square that in our difficulty in terms of our investing? I worry a little bit that these broad swaths and the way the market is going is that we work ourselves in, we're already down to only 40, but we work ourselves in, if we, if we really pull the thread, we could say, boy, they're also owned in part by or supervised by, and where does it end?
Great question. And again, one of the reasons why we would probably advocate for removing corporates altogether, if we are not able to come to an agreement that council and our community supports with regard to our values. Typically, when issues occur, right, when securities are issued, they're going to be issued for that subsidiary or that particular use, right? So, so that is going to be captured by our filter. So if it's for the casino gaming, you know, product, typically, they're going to issue funds to raise funds for that subsidiary in most cases, but you're right, they could be also issued at that higher level in the organization, and it would be classified under that.
And because, to the point that you were having earlier, the question of bonds versus stock, I think that that helps make that understanding a little bit. Thank you for that. In the graph that you showed, I think we used the term yield. I want to make sure that I'm understanding that term correctly. Yield is meaning what in that graph? Yield is meaning what in that graph?
Could we go back to that?
Next one? That one?
There we go. And Michael, I'm going to have you, if you can hear us. We have the historical yield slide up, if you want to speak to that.
All right. So you're just looking at a graphical representation of the return of the portfolio.
Okay.
So the second slide with the dollars are the amount of interest earned on the portfolio. And this yield will transform into the return as a percentage.
So-
So like for, like at that graph there, we go back into like 2014, 2015, post-market collapse. You know, the Federal Reserve reduced rates dramatically. The portfolio yield and the amount of yield offered on bonds we're investing in dropped equally, right? So the return on the portfolio dropped, and then it can vary. So we've had, you know, rising interest rates for the last five years coming out of COVID, and so the return has improved. So you look, you know, generally, the average duration of our portfolios, somewhere around a year and a half historically. And so when you're looking at comparative yields, you look at the two-year treasury note, and it says today it's paying 360. And so that, the yield on that fluctuates. And so like the portfolio, we're continually investing money as it comes in from the city into new bonds to add into the portfolio. And that affects the return and the amount of money we earn long-term. But it doesn't change dramatically. We take a lot of money in every year. You know, we have an $8 billion annual budget. The vast majority of all of that is spent. So the fact that we take money in and spend it all every year limits our ability to add duration to this portfolio. So we really have a pretty short-term book, and we're limited to investing into the front end of the curve where interest rates are generally typically lower.
Thank you, Michael.
I don't know.
Yep, that's great. So the reason I wanted to highlight this is that this graph shows a dip in our yield at a time when, if we are not careful in how we think about our city investments as bond-related and not just playing the stock market. Because often, as a policymaker, right, when people talk to me about this issue, they have a strong opinion up or down about we should or shouldn't invest in. And they kind of use that term as if they're talking about buying stock in one company over another, picking our favorites, picking our enemies, et cetera, et cetera. And if I were to put this graph against the stock market, it looks different in 2021. And if I think about what was happening in 2021, we were all refinancing our homes in the 2% and 3% world. And now we're not buying homes at the 6% and 7% and 8% world. And so we see those price of bonds. But it's very different if we're not careful in how we talk about this conversation about buying stock, because those were also years, and I'm pretty sure that it felt like people were in the stock market seeing earnings that wouldn't reflect this graph necessarily. And I just, I wanted to use this as a moment to kind of highlight the difficulty in sometimes this conversation, because what we buy is not what, if I go to my broker and buy necessarily by stock in a company or not, this is slightly different. And I just thought that this graph, given our experience through, and you noted, a big change during the pandemic and into now, and I think we've all lived that, and it's a recent example of markets and differences in bonds versus stocks, et cetera, that up until this point, I don't often hear get talked about when we talk about institutions' investment policies. So just thank you for including it.
Thank you.
And Michael, thank you for the yield explanation. It gives me more now to talk when stakeholders come and talk to me, gives me more to understand and talk to them about our portfolio. So I appreciate that. I don't have any other questions. I'm looking at my colleagues before we go to public comment.
I'll just note that I'm glad that we weren't in crypto. And, I mean, we made a lot of money, but then potentially lost a lot of money even more than that. So good on you for not doing that.
I agree.
All right, you heard it here first. Green's happy we weren't in crypto. Okay, with that, let's go ahead and have you both step back, and we'll have a public comment. Let's call three up at a time, please.
Sounds good. The first three, David Chen, Lydia Kiesling, Sally Jockin. You can all come forward.
Great. Come on forward, introduce yourselves, and whoever gets up there first, take it away. You're up. Go ahead.
Hi.
Hi.
My name is Lydia Kiesling, and I'm a member of Portland DSA. I live in District 3. I'm a proud mom of two PPS students. I'm here today to ask that the Finance Committee and the City Council as a whole implement a human rights screen for our investment policy. History shows that economic boycotts, divestment, and sanctions are critical to movements for justice. The apartheid regime of South Africa was toppled by South Africans with global support from individual grocery store clerks to national governments. I believe our city investment policy can help bend the arc toward justice, or at least better reflect Portland's values by using human rights as criteria when deciding how to invest and spend our public dollars. It's my understanding that there are logistical concerns around amending our investment policy, both due to the nature of the corporate bond market and the need for a third-party service to assess investments based on human rights. Respected organizations like the American Friends Service Committee have helped other cities find workarounds, from manually adding a shortlist of companies to asking providers to create custom indexing products. If the nature of our financial system is such that truly there is no possibility for ethical investment, that's a bigger problem. Like I said, I'm a democratic socialist. But surely, our council can create a framework that would avoid direct investments in companies that are, not in the stocks, but in the bonds, in companies that appear in reports, for example, human rights reports or UN watch lists. Our current policy already prohibits investment in security services, and I would argue that some tech companies have already moved us out of compliance through their role in civil liberties infringements here and abroad. I know that what is happening in Congo, Sudan, the occupied West Bank, or Gaza, where Palestinian families continue to be killed daily despite the so-called ceasefire, may not feel like a priority to our local government. But there are many reasons to take action on human rights. It's not just empty rhetoric that many struggles are connected. The technologies of surveillance and incarceration that Israel uses in its systematic violations of Palestinian human rights are also used by ICE agents to track and kidnap our neighbors in Portland. I volunteer with PERC, and I have seen with my own eyes the way Portlanders are being tortured by the paramilitary force that uses some of these technologies. Although countries, including the US, have consistently made a mockery of the post-World War II legal framework intended to prevent atrocities like the Holocaust, that legal framework does exist, and it obligates governments and corporations to act in the face of atrocity crimes. If justice ever becomes a guiding principle of our world, governments, companies, and the individuals within them will be held legally accountable for their economic support of criminal regimes. On the pragmatic side, while American politicians may not think Gaza matters, their constituents do. Horror around America's role in Gaza was a factor in Kamala Harris's weak performance in the last election, just as it helped propel a historic ground game and electoral victory in the New York mayoral election. Constituents want to see effective legislation that addresses our moral objections to genocide. This is one of the most direct ways you as legislators can take action for the families of Gaza, Sudan, Congo, or any place torn apart by human-caused violence. Please take action. Thank you.
Thank you for coming today. Ma'am, please go ahead.
Good afternoon. I'm Sally Jockin. I live in Southeast Portland District 3. I work with Multnomah Democrats Foreign Policy and Criminal Justice Study Groups, and I am active with the Oregon for Human Rights Coalition. I'm testifying today because I'm very interested in investments made by our city. I want Portland to profit from entities that support human rights, abide by law, protect our environment, and benefit our residents. I'm very glad that Portland already has a policy of not investing in the petroleum industry, nor in alcoholic beverages, casinos and gaming, for-profit correctional facilities, small arms, and security services. But now, I want City Council to update and significantly add to this list. This will mean divesting from some current holdings, such as corporate bonds invested in five companies, Amazon, Microsoft, Google, Nvidia, and Intel, with ties to the Israeli military, US immigration, US military, and/or US prisons. But I'm confident that there are many profitable new investments that can replace them. I say this because there are other cities, St. Louis, Medford, Massachusetts, Somerville, Massachusetts, Iowa City, Portland, Maine, and Northampton, Massachusetts, that have already divested from entities that violate their values, which they wouldn't do without knowing that they can meet their financial goals through ethical investing. Portland's expanded list of prohibited investments should definitely prohibit entities that contribute to the violation of human rights or international law anywhere, from denial of due process to genocide. Portland should not invest in corporations that harm our environment, including other fossil fuels besides petroleum, or in spyware companies that sell to countries that participate in warrantless surveillance, or in large weapons corporations that arm governments engaged in serious abuses, or in entities that contribute to the illegal and harmful treatment of non-citizen residents of our own country. We are a sanctuary city, so no company that violates due process in deporting immigrants or detains them in inhumane facilities deserves Portland's investments. I have great confidence that you, our City Council's Finance Committee, will come up with expanded screening policies that are up to date and reflect the values of Portlanders. Thank you.
Thank you for coming today. Let's go ahead and call the next three up.
Next, we have Julia Ford, Rod Sutch, and Ricky King. Julia, you're online. You can unmute.
Thank you. Hi, everybody. My name is Julia Ford. I'm a lifelong Portlander, living up here in North Portland, an alumni of Portland Public Schools, a precinct committee person for the Multnomah County Democrats, a member of Jewish Voice for Peace, and a member of the Oregon Jewish Caucus. Because I'm Jewish, I believe deeply in the words "never again" and in the universal dignity of every human life. That belief demands that we hold our own institutions, including our city investment policy, to the highest standard. It's mind-boggling to me that here in Portland, a city that outwardly prides itself on progressive values, that we still don't have alignment on ensuring that our city's investments, our tax dollars, are not funding human rights abuses, both here at home and abroad. We, you, took the right stand to withdraw our complicity in the genocide in Sudan. And it's now time to apply that same standard to any entity, for example, corporate or foreign bonds violating international law. This includes the Israeli government, US immigration enforcement, and other components of the prison industrial complex. The frameworks to make decisions, to implement and reevaluate our investments against robust ESG frameworks well beyond creditworthiness do exist. Our current policy is out of date, and we are behind other cities in our ability to uphold the values of our constituents, our taxpayers, all of us. Right now, nearly $140 million is tied up in corporate bonds from companies that Sally named, Amazon, Microsoft, Google, Nvidia, Intel, companies which are directly involved in technologies used by the Israeli military, by US immigration enforcement, by the US prison system. As a sanctuary city, this should deeply trouble all of us. As a Jewish Portlander, I want to be very clear that applying a human rights lens to Israel, to every government, including our own, it's not anti-Semitic. It's our moral responsibility. Every major international human rights organization, from the World Health Organization to Human Rights Watch, Amnesty International, to Doctors Without Borders, from Save the Children to United Nations, they have documented Israeli apartheid, ongoing genocide in Gaza. Ignoring that while claiming to stand for justice is an abomination to my Jewish values and to our values as a city. Portland must join places like St. Louis, Northampton, Medford, and Somerville, Massachusetts, Iowa City, Portland, Maine, in adopting a strong and expanded human rights and international law screening for our city investments. Our city policy must reflect the current realities of technology, global finance, and human rights. Our money should be out of genocide, out of illegal deportations, out of racial profiling, out of human rights abuses. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Go ahead. Sir?
Rod.
Okay, sorry. Thank you, Finance Committee members. My name is Rod Sutch. I live in District 3. As you review Portland's investment policy today, I'd like to remind you of some history. In January 2016, the Portland City Council voted unanimously to suspend investments in corporate bonds for one year. This suspension came in response to widespread community protest opposing Portland's investments in Bank of America and Caterpillar, Inc. The grievance against Bank of America was due to its financial aid to the private prison industry and the Dakota Access Pipeline, which was being built illegally on the Lakota-Sue Reservation. The protest against Caterpillar was due to its role in war crimes and ethnic cleansing in Palestine. Rather than single out these two corporations for their bad behavior, however, the City Council enacted a one-time, one-year ban on all corporate bonds, almost as if to avoid taking a stand on Caterpillar and Bank of America. Since 2016, I have monitored the city's portfolio, and I've been grateful to see that the city has never again invested directly in Caterpillar. Recently, however, I discovered a Little Notice News article in which the former city treasurer reassured the supporters of apartheid that Portland would continue to invest in Caterpillar via the state treasury's short-term fund. Today, that short-term fund has more than $350 million invested in Caterpillar bonds and commercial paper. Fortunately, this egregious decision on their part can be remedied because Portland can withdraw voluntarily from that fund. Its participation is not mandatory. Portland must not continue to invest in a company that has played a major role in the genocide in Gaza, a company that has refused to stop selling its equipment in the state of Israel, even after video evidence revealed the use of its equipment in the mass burial of Palestinian ambulance drivers and rescue workers. The International Court of Justice ruled in July of this year that Israel's occupation of Palestinian land is unlawful. Caterpillar has long played a role in that illegal occupation and the ethnic cleansing of Palestinians. Any investment in Caterpillar in those is a violation of those war crimes. I urge you to notify the board of the short-term fund that Portland will live up to its value and will affirm the importance of international law by withdrawing from the fund so long as it is invested in Caterpillar. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ricky is online. Ricky, you can unmute and begin your testimony.
Hi there. Thank you, councilors and council president. I'm Ricky, Ricky King. I'm from Northeast Portland. I'm active with the Portland Democratic Socialists of America and Oregon for Human Rights. I live and was born in District 3. I'm here to ask the Finance Committee to genuinely work to find a way to include human rights abuses in the investment overlays mentioned earlier in the presentation. Right now, several of the tech companies in the city's portfolio, those being mentioned earlier, Amazon, Nvidia, Microsoft, Google, have well-documented ties to the Israeli military, and each of them have a detailed company complicity profile on the no tech for oppression documentation on bsmovement.net. And I'd be more than happy to provide those documents to the committee or to your office emails after the hearing. In terms of profit, violence ends up being pretty profitable, especially if you're in the business of selling weapons, tech, or surveillance software. One of the most striking ways that our money here in the US and through the city of Portland that we enable genocide is through Project Nimbus, which is a joint contract with Amazon, Google- is through Project Nimbus, which is a joint contract with Amazon, Google, and the Israeli government and military that enables the latter to use an AI system called Lavender to identify which Gazan targets or which people to airstrike. Last year, Israeli news publications themselves reported that this method led to many of the thousands of civilian deaths in Gaza. The city has already prohibited investments based on their impact in the world, and it's long past time that we include human rights in the socially responsible overlays mentioned in the investment policy presentation. And while the Bloomberg Standard industrial classification may not be the way to do that, the way that the office already does. So I also don't agree that a credit score is enough to reflect whether a company is committing atrocities. A few of the cities across the country mentioned earlier, including two recently, Massachusetts, both Medford and Northampton, most recently, have passed divestment language at the city level. And in Northampton, they resolved to divest from companies that contract with Israel on September 18th of this year. And from an article about the vote, there's this quote saying, "The next step in divestment is for the mayor and treasurer of the city of Northampton to negotiate and determine financial logistics. The city council members have developed a two-year plan to ensure divestment will occur along with more investical investing in the future." So it's possible to resolve, to move towards divestment, and to remove our funds from genocide and human rights abuses without having the full framework immediately. The AFSC has helped cities to build a framework and a short list of investments to avoid. And I agree that the burden of judgment shouldn't fall on a single city employee. But I do think that there's some manpower and time that needs to be dedicated to finding a solution so that our city can be an actually ethical or socially responsible investor in more than just name. Thank you.
Thank you. We can call the next three.
Next, we have Sammy Orteleva, Danish Attis, and Lori Mercer.
All right, go ahead and introduce yourself. Thank you for being here.
Thank you. My name is Dr. Sammy Orteleva. I'm a queer Palestinian, and I'm a recent addition to the Portland area. Were it not for the United States' support for the ethnic cleansing and genocide of my people, I would have been born in Palestine. But instead, I was born here on occupied native land. We have all seen the images from Palestine in the last two years, the mass murder of indigenous Palestinians, the total leveling of civilian infrastructure necessary to maintain life in densely populated regions like Gaza, both only made possible by weapons primarily provided by the United States. The proposed investment policy lists prohibited industry classifications that were discussed earlier based on the Bloomberg Industry Classification Standard, which notably includes a prohibition on investing in small arms, but no prohibition on large arms manufacturers producing the bombs affecting genocide as we speak, and as the Zionist state continues its destruction of Gaza despite the so-called ceasefire. But physical arms manufacturers alone are an insufficient exclusion. With American support, Israel has dropped so many bombs on Gaza that it cannot select its targets manually. Tech companies such as Amazon, Google, and Microsoft have eagerly stepped up to provide the digital resources to allow automated target selection. Digital infrastructure and the AI models that run on it are themselves weapons when deployed as they are against my people in Palestine, just as they are weapons when deployed here by the Department of Homeland Security and Immigration and Customs Enforcement. The most current report on the city of Portland's investments from last month indicate that the city holds $68 million in Amazon corporate notes, $26.4 million in Google, and $30 million in Microsoft, three of the most participatory companies in the genocide in Gaza. The current policy is clearly failing and in no way prohibits investments in the most egregious companies, as claimed earlier on this agenda item. The further claim that creditworthiness concerns alone are sufficient did not stop these corporate note purchases. Over $20 million of the aforementioned corporate notes the city currently holds in those three companies were purchased in 2025, years after the total leveling and genocide in Gaza was broadcast to the whole world, years after there was time for that to be reflected in the creditworthiness. Purchasing a corporate note is a direct monetary loan from the city to the corporation in question. It is material support, and it must reflect our values. I urge the commission to add a human rights screen to its investment policy. Prohibited industry classifications alone are insufficiently granular as many industries, like many technologies, can be used both to benefit people but also to commit genocide. Thank you.
Lori is online. Lori, you can unmute and start.
Hi. My name is Lori Mercer. I'm a longtime Portland resident in District 4. I urge the Portland City Council Finance Committee to adopt a human rights and international law screen on city investments. It's disappointing to learn that the city currently has investments in corporations that abuse human rights and violate international law as others have specifically addressed today. Our investment policy needs updating to reflect the values of Portlanders and to avoid financial risk. There's a growing movement in cities across the United States, from Maine to California and in cities and countries around the world to divest from weapons manufacturers and companies complicit in human rights violations. For example, Alameda County, California, the Norwegian Sovereign Wealth Fund, and the Netherlands have divested from Caterpillar due to its role in supplying bulldozers used in Israel's murderous assaults on Gaza and used to bury the bodies of Palestinians to cover up war crimes. Unfortunately, as Rod earlier mentioned, the Oregon Treasury still holds more than $350 million in Caterpillar financial instruments in the short-term fund. Not only should we not be investing in companies that profit from death and destruction, these companies are or will become unprofitable and risky. The Investor Alliance for Human Rights notes, "As the global economic costs of conflict and violence climbed last year to an estimated $19 trillion, or almost 15% of global GDP, these trends are also having material impacts on investors." The United States currently spends over $1 trillion annually on military weapons and warfare, and the Pentagon is the number-one institutional polluter in the world as it unleashes over a billion metric tons of CO2 in the atmosphere from its 800 military bases and multiple bombing campaigns. It destroys human and environmental life when that money is sorely needed in American communities for basic needs, including housing, food security, health care, and education. Our cities, including Portland, can be laboratories for turning to more socially productive investments and withholding our capital and taxpayer investments away from the material and moral risks of the military-industrial complex. Numerous studies indicate that portfolios with a human rights or socially responsible investment screen typically perform similarly to or better than traditional portfolios. Plus, they can reduce risk. Their long-term performance is generally considered to be competitive, and incorporating these screens aligns with ethical values without sacrificing financial returns. There are references today about some of these rating agencies that can help us provide the screen, including the United Nations, the American Friends Service Committee, and others.
Thank you, Lori. Thank you, Lori. Appreciate that. Any more?
Yeah. Next, we have Hyung Nam, Irina Haas, and Chris Low. Hyung, you can unmute yourself and start your testimony.
Hi, my name is Hyung Nam, and I was one of the members of the Socially Responsible Investments Committee for Portland. And I'm looking back at my notes and documents here. And first of all, I just want to say that I think it's important for us to have a human rights screen and to remember that the impact that the global divestment campaign made against apartheid in South Africa and that we need to do the same, especially considering the situation with Israel and the fact that the International Criminal Court of Justice and also UN experts have raised concerns about apartheid and genocide. And what I want to urge is that we should not rely on something like the Morgan Stanley MSCI proprietary ratings for ESG. When we looked at it before as a committee, spent quite a lot of time on this, we found that to be completely insufficient with them rating corporate bonds from companies like Wells Fargo and Caterpillar to be rated high enough to be investable. And the whole idea that this is all proprietary and non-transparent is really a problem. But I think the important thing is that the city not buying these bonds by themselves does not make a huge difference. But the important thing is that we join this campaign, international campaign, to make a difference, just like what happened with targeting apartheid. And simply not investing in any corporate bonds like what the city did because of the controversy back when this was brought up is not good enough because we really do need to name these companies. This is really kind of a symbolic thing. But for us to do our part in this global campaign against apartheid and genocide. And I'd be happy to talk to you in much more detail about our experience back when we had this committee and spent all this time looking through the MSCI reports, which we had to return to City Council because those were all proprietary documents. Thank you.
Thank you. Go right ahead, sir.
Hi, my name's Chris Low. I live in District 3. I'm a member of Portland DSA and of Jewish Voice for Peace. I'm also the holder of a PhD in African history from Yale University, where my research focus was on Southern Africa. And I was very active in the anti-apartheid movement relating to South Africa in the 1980s and into the 1990s. Basically, I want to testify in favor of a robust and principled human rights screen for city investments. I think it wouldn't fit probably into how Bloomberg classifies industries, but as a sort of principle, to the ones that are listed there in the current policy, I would want to add something like services related to the administration of human rights abuses. And this is partly informed by my memories of the anti-apartheid movement against South Africa, where the question of IBM was of great importance because they supplied computer equipment of that day for the administration of past laws and other forms of internal repression in South Africa, and which were sort of considered to be, by some people, in a sort of gray area regarding an international arms embargo that went on. Anyway, I think that part of the lesson about South Africa that comes up now is that one of the kinds of screens that was used was collaboration with oppressive governments of particular countries, and which that also has a certain kind of objective quality. So to me, a principled policy would potentially involve, we've heard about Sudan, Democratic Republic of Congo, one could add the Philippines, Chinese practices towards Uyghurs in Xinjiang Province, actors in the Yemeni Civil War, possibly El Salvador, possibly Nicaragua. So, but I think there probably would need to be some kind of body that was assisting administrators of the funds to make that kind of determination and be consulting with the citizens of Portland about our values and which countries may be making practices that violate them. Thank you for listening to my testimony.
Thank you, Mr. Low.
That ends public testimony for today.
Okay. Appreciate everybody who signed up and was able to make it down here and testify. Colleagues, I'll look to see if there's any discussion before we entertain any motions.
I apologize. We have one other person online who had an incorrect name.
Yep, please go ahead.
Allow them to succeed. Irina Haas, you can go ahead and start speaking.
Hi, thank you. Good afternoon, City Council. My name is Irina Haas. I'd be there today, but I'm sick. I'm a mother, documentary filmmaker, and taxpayer. I urge City Council to bring human rights into our investments, as so many American cities have already done. In 2004, I visited the West Bank with my cousin, who was a professor and was doing work there. What I witnessed profoundly impacted my life. The West Bank, a land about the size of Delaware, has been and continues to be broken into non-contiguous islands. Israel fractures community, movement, and basic freedoms by building the wall and then breaking them apart with so-called settlements. The words "settlements" and "bypass roads," bypass roads are made just for Israelis, make very destructive, deadly, and cruel practices seem almost benign. One morning, I observed a man helping an old woman who was attempting to climb over a new part of the wall. She was probably trying to see a family member. I'm guessing it was her daughter or grandchildren. And she couldn't do it. And I tried to imagine my mother trying to do the same thing every day, and I couldn't. I saw checkpoints that would take hours for people to get through. I saw teenage IDF soldiers standing around Palestinian markets, huge guns slung over their shoulders. I saw rubble, wreckage, and poverty. And I remind you, this was in 2004. In Jenin, I remember climbing a hill of rubble and then seeing a boy who was about 10 years old playing there. And he smiled at me, and I think of him sometimes. Is he still alive today? Does he smile like he used to? I bring this up because it is far past the time to divest from large weapon manufacturers that uphold genocide. We need to divest from surveillance tools that spy on people without judicial authorization. We have to divest from any and all corporations complicit in genocide. And we need to divest the entire range of the fossil fuel industry. And finally, we have to divest from any entity that cooperates with ICE detentions and deportations, especially without official warrants. All these things are supremely connected. And I know you've all heard that before, so I won't belabor the point. But those of us who have been aware of what's been happening in Palestine for 75 years knew that this kind of terror would make its way here. And of course, it's here now with kidnappings on the street, with Israeli software that hacks phones and scans people's biometrics, including their pupils. And next week, I plan to speak about tear gas at your next City Council session. I just want to close by saying money is a love language of the fossil fuel industry, Israel, and ICE. And we, the people, need government representation that are going to do the right things with our tax money. I voted for you. Please do the right thing.
Thank you. Okay, colleagues, we'll go now to any discussion before moving to a motion. Counselor Green?
I just want to know, I appreciate the testimony today. I know it's difficult to talk about. It's an important thing that we need to take, I think, stock of in our city. I did not bring an amendment today pursuant to some of these things because I think you have to do a little work to get there. And I haven't, I don't think, given the space to do that thoughtful work. I am interested in moving forward on a human rights screen, so I'll be working on that over the course of the next year. And I look forward to working with those of you who have some expertise in this area, and anyone else who wants to work with me. Thanks.
Vice Chair?
Thank you, Chair. I'll just note that in listening to the testimony, I heard a lot of different asks. There were asks for a human rights screen, asks about fossil fuels more broadly than we already have, asks about international law and specific companies, and asks about investments in both broader and narrower lists of countries. So I think as we potentially see more discussion that it sounds like you're going to bring forward, I'll be interested in hearing from you, counselor, how that relates to the broad array of asks that we heard today because I think there were some themes that wound through them, but certainly not the same asks from everybody we heard from.
Okay, I'm not seeing a lot of other discussion. I will be supporting this moving forward as it is. If there is more discussion to be had, I think that a deliberate and also a specific dive into the concerns that exist for some of these because I often do not hear the specifics that come with the concern when you name a company. I am not prepared to, at this point, move the city--